I know, I'm in.
My side of the street looks pretty good.
The lights?
The street itself.
Yeah.
She was street itself, we needed fun.
Oh, the street, the actual road.
Alright, it's that time. We'll call the meeting into order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, well now move on to roll call.
Councilmember Hall.
Present.
Councilmember Mizony.
Yes.
Councilmember Palphini.
Here.
Councilmember Tavallaro.
Here.
Mayor Parham.
Present. Alright, now we'll move on to the acceptance of agenda and urgency items.
I'll move to accept the agenda.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but you have a couple of changes. All the red tagging ordinance, which...
Yes.
Is item A under council business?
So, item A under council business.
Right, yes.
Will be removed and we will be doing amendment to item E under finance for budget adjustments.
Correct.
And all of the council members have received the updated item E.
With the changes in mind, I will approve or motion that we accept the budget.
I'll second.
I mean, excuse me, the agenda.
I'll second that.
Alright, any discussion? Public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Alright, motion carries to accept the amended agenda. Now it's time for non-agenda public comment. If there's anybody in the public that would like to have a comment on anything that's on the agenda? No? Alright. Like to say I'm happy to see we have people in the audience in person tonight than our six or seven YouTube viewers, so appreciate you all. Alright, council member announcements, meeting reports and comments, we will start with councilmember Mizony.
I want to say to tell the Public Works and Police Department during the snow this last month, what a great job they did. Because a couple of trees broke on our street and landed on vehicles and it was a nasty storm with a lot of wind damage, but I want to let you guys know that you guys did a good job and then the power went out and you guys never stopped going, and both departments, so I appreciate it. And also, I'm sure it was swamped for a while down here until they closed, but I appreciate that.
Alright, councilmember Hall.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have anything to report other than this is my last meeting and I think this is my farewell time to talk. I don't have much other than, like everybody to know that, you know, that the... It was an honor of my lifetime to be on this council. And I need to say this, if I was thirty years younger, I think I would have been on the council saying, "Look at me, I'm on the council." But this run has been really important, we've been through fires, we've been through some very serious things. We got Main Street started, we did all the pavers and that work and the lights and those things, we have a new crossing. Those issues like that, we have an ordinance for chickens now. It's been an honor, there's been so many things, but I think the main thing is just, you know, the... I want to leave with, you know, it's just the importance of, we need an audience. We have an audience tonight because we have new members, but we need the public, we need the public input. And I think that our staff is in good shape at this time and we're moving towards a new city manager. And I'm going to, I'm leaving this meeting now to go to an elementary school board meeting because I really believe that that's where the change is going to happen for our community. And what my message will be at the school board is same as it's been here, it's not about being on the council or being on the board, it's having a posse behind you. You've got to have people involved in it. And the things that have been done in our community, there's been people, when we needed it, we filled the rooms. And when the subject came up, we've had at least, you know, ten people to support. And many times, we've had much more than that and many times, we've had... It's full with people opposing too. But it's been my honor and I'm looking forward to being in the audience and making sure that we have a road fund. Our Main Street is hurting right now and we don't have the money to fix it, that I know of. And I hope we're, you know, going to find those funds, but it's something that we need to... That I really believe that we need to make sure that we have some funds for that. And if we're talking about the sales tax one more time, when we talk about the sales tax, the numbers are eighty to eighty-five percent of all sales tax is from people that are passing through. And we're already paying it, when you make it, we take a trip to Reading or we go to San Francisco, Sacramento, we're paying those taxes there too. So those people need to pay as we move through, as they move through. So thank you and it's been an honor and my cohort, they're right on, love you guys, thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you. Councilmember Tavallaro.
I have three pages.
Three pages?
I never do three pages.
Okay, I think today.
Chief Mayberry, thank you for being a good listener and for giving a hundred and ten percent... I wasn't going to cry, you know what? For giving a hundred percent, ten percent to your job and to the city. Thank you for your integrity in hiring good, excellent officers and never compromising your values just to have an employee. I can't tell you the amount of times that I've told some kids at the high school the same thing yesterday and today. I appreciate being able to say, "We have a good police department," if anybody ever says anything, and I know that I'm speaking the truth. And I appreciate that, thank you. Chris, thank you for your dedication to the city, you took on a tough job and you're doing it well, thank you. To all of your employees... I forgot to say thank you to your police officers too, because I appreciate them. And thank you to your employees too, Chris, they do a great job and they're dedicated and they keep this city moving. Jill, thank you for joining us in a, I wrote sad mess. It kind of was a sad mess and thank you for your help in everything in the community. Steve, thank you for what you did when I was gone in the snow because I was here when I watched Brian leave ten times in the middle of the night when the snow started. I appreciate your guys doing that. And I appreciate your hard work towards attempting to get our city an ambulance service because we needed it and it wasn't going to happen, it's not going to happen, but I appreciate all the work that you did to get that. Because that was why, one of the reasons why we needed you here and you tried. I'm thankful for your commitment to the city. I thank Brian, who's not here, but I'm sure that he's watching me on TV. Thank you for your willingness to keep our community safe and your willingness to stay way ahead of the rest of the chiefs in your pursuit of education for yourself and your personnel and our future firefighters. Thank you for both for making the Weed Fire Department the best fire department in the county. And again, as I like to say about my police department, I feel the same way with the fire department. I know other fire departments a little better than I know other police departments and that's good, Mark, right? That I don't know all the cops and sheriffs. I tried to explain that to him. But I do know our fire department and I can say that we have the best fire department in the county. David, thank you for your education of me and our city. And after eight years, I learned a lot from you and your firm and all the fun people that work there, parties. Guys, go, go to their party. Steve, it was fun. Thank you for stepping up for us in a time of need, I appreciate that. Sandy, thank you for your help in so many ways, from Lola Help... You don't mean this station. To questions, answers and research with the help that I needed. And there's no Jeremy, but Jeremy, thank you for keeping me straight on thinking I don't need a microphone when you do, when you need me to use a microphone. Bob, thank you for your hundred years of service to the city. And Ken, thank you for all our lively discussions and we can still have them, just because I'm not here, we can still have our lively discussions. And your knowledge for our city and the ordinances in our past that we've done, I appreciate that. And to my community, thank you for electing me twice to the city council and having faith that I could try to do what was best for our city. I'm still as sad as some of you, probably most of you, that one person can keep our Main Street buildings hostage. I so wish in my time here that we could, that could have been fixed. And I tried, we all tried, we've been trying, we're still trying, but the best word I can use for that is we're being held hostage and it's not fun. I'm happy that we got our water issues finished up in my eight years and I'm proud of our little town and all the good folks that call it home as I plan to do for the rest of our years. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Palphini.
Well, after all of that, I have very little to say other than North State Giving Tuesday was a success. So I appreciate anybody that helped donate to any of their causes that they hold near and dear. I would like to say so long to my compadre here. It's been pretty good, so thanks. Sue, again, lively, I thank you very much. And I have to train these two yet, but they'll be okay. That's all I have.
Alright. Well, I would like to thank both councilmembers Tavallaro and Hall for their years of service and dedication to the city. I'd also like to thank our new oncoming council members for stepping up to the plate to fill those roles. It's not an easy decision to make and I'm thankful that we do have people in this community that are willing to step up when the time is needed. And again, thank you to the staff for all the work during the storms. I'm sure we're going to have a lot more coming, but I'm very privy to what's going on behind the scenes out there and it's a lot of work and it's appreciated. And thank you to the community members for the tree lighting that was very successful and hopefully we can continue that tradition. And just want to wish everybody in the community a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
I know, I just thought of something else. Santa will be in town next week on Monday and Wednesday and Thursday. And it's out on social media, the neighborhoods and the areas on which days. Fire Department has it on their page.
Alright, moving on to the consent agenda, we'll go through these items here and discuss them. So we have Public Works by motion, council will consider second reading and adoption by title only of ordinance number four seven nine two thousand twenty-four, establishing administrative remedies procedure for challenges to fees, charges and assessments. Item B, revenue and finance by motion, council will consider second reading and adoption by title only of ordinance number four eight zero two thousand twenty-four, amending chapter three point three two of the Weed Municipal Code regarding community facilities district number two thousand nine dash one. Item C, Public Works by motion, council will consider adoption of resolution number fifty-one two thousand twenty-four, adopting a City of Weed language access plan for the CDBG program two thousand twenty-four, Lincoln Heights planning and technical assistance. Item D, fire by motion, council will consider approval for the Weed Volunteer Fire Department to submit a FEMA grant application for a commercial extractor, which is a washer, as well as a commercial dryer for cleaning personal protective equipment. Item E, city clerk by motion, approve minutes from November fourteen, excuse me, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting. Item F, finance by motion, approve payment warrants dated November seventh two thousand twenty-four through November twenty-six two thousand twenty-four. Included any voided warrants totaling three hundred sixty-eight thousand seven hundred fifty-six dollars and ninety cents. And item G, finance by motion, approve and file month end report for November two thousand twenty-four. Are there any items for further discussion or removal from consent? Do we have any public comment about the consent agenda items? I'm hoping all of you read through them eagerly before the meeting.
I'll second it.
And I'll turn on my microphone.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. There are no items removed from consent, so we'll move on to our next item, which is the council oath of office and election of officers. So item A, administration of oath of office for newly appointed council members.
Let's swap, you want to swap B for A?
Yeah, we want to make a motion to swap B for A?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we change the order from A goes to B and B goes to A. So we can get, Bob needs to be out of here by six.
Alright, I'll second that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so we'll move on to plaque presentations for councilmember Hall and councilmember Tavallaro for their years of service. I'm assuming there's going to be a photo op, you'd like us to come down here?
We're going to put it on the bulletin board outside or what?
Yeah.
Smile for the... Actually, you don't have to, really, you need to be extreme. Good luck, good luck on your next venture.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't hear the click. We need the ones with the light bulbs that pop out, remember the old blue bulb?
Oh, okay. You can tell I was leaving.
Take one for me.
How many years are you?
Sixteen years. I was a young man when you drug me up.
Now we will go on to the administration.
We're going to get uniforms next year, aren't we?
Move out of the way here.
Don't go anywhere, you can come up here now, no? Where do they go in anyway? She's leaving now. What seats do they occupy? Anyone they want.
Whichever, yeah.
Well, I know, it's not mine. I want permanent fixture. I'm going for year twenty-four. Just, no, not really. Sixteen is my next. I was a young man. Sort of. I got older starting to be here two years. Again, a good guy. You get the scenic view is all you get, but only in the summertime. You can see. Take it easy on you.
Alright, it is official, congratulations to both of you. Okay, now we'll move on to item C, which is the election of mayor and mayor pro tempore by the council.
Thank you, Mayor, at this time I will open the floor for nominations for the position of mayor.
I'll nominate Daryl Pore for mayor.
We need a second or any of that?
No, Derek.
We don't need a second.
Daryl, do you accept?
I do.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Daryl, congratulations.
Thank you. And thank you council for your continued faith and support. Okay, election of mayor tempore. Do we have any nominations?
He makes a motion for Ken, I'll translate for him.
You accept that nomination?
Do we have any other nominations for mayor pro tem? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Alright, new council member comments, this is your time and...
I'm very grateful and I'm very thankful to be here, so I will try my best, I have a lot to learn, but...
It's a new adventure.
It is a new adventure.
It is, believe me.
Thank you for giving this opportunity.
Thank you for stepping up to fill this role.
Does that mean it's my turn?
It is your turn.
Okay. I want to thank you all for the very warm welcome, including Bob Hall and Sue, who just left our presence. I want everyone to know I'm truly energized and excited to be here. I'm ready to share my family-first agenda with you listening as well as my fellow council members. To get today and together, I know we can positively impact the future of Weed and all of its residents. Let me start by saying, it's time. It's time for our longtime residents to enjoy a lively, vibrant and family-friendly Main Street. One where parents can find real reasons to become patrons of our local stores and restaurants. Let's create an atmosphere where families feel welcome, safe and excited to be part of our community that is thriving. To the residents of Weed, I have heard your concerns and understand your disappointment with some decisions made in previous councils that did not align with your vision of this city. I want to assure you that I will not engage in such actions and my commitment is to listen to you, represent your needs and make decisions that reflect the values and desires of our community. As we embark on this adventure, I humbly will work with this new composition of the council to ensure that the City of Weed does not fall into the trap of quick fix Band-Aid solutions. I am sure we all would agree that it's easy to invest in temporary fixes that don't truly address our long-term needs. I believe this council is well-suited with its diverse backgrounds to make a step and make conscientious, intentional investments that will shape the future of Weed for generations to come. I commit to the citizens of Weed that I am ready to hear the ingenuity of this council with an open mind and you in mind so that we can make decisions that invest in our city's future, not just its present. I hope with the fresh perspectives that are here in this newly composed council, all of you will join in my confidence that the collective "we" can turn all of our ideas into action, making Weed a better place where families thrive, businesses flourish and our community is stronger than ever. I think we can make this happen, let's make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Very well said. Well, I am very excited as well for this new council and the work that we're going to be engaging over the next several years. Okay, speaking of council business, we will move on, we are not, we removed item A, so we will begin with item B, which is code enforcement. By motion, council will consider introduction and first reading by title only of ordinance number four eight two two thousand twenty-four, adding chapter twelve point two two and amending sections nine point one zero point zero two zero, nine point one zero point zero five zero and nine point one zero point one five zero of chapter nine point one zero of the Weed Municipal Code.
Thank you. So what we are asking is for considerations of resolution related to camping and fires in public, on public property. And this is something that's been discussed dating years back. It was put on hold due to court decisions in the Ninth Circuit and the Eastern Court up in Idaho for a couple cities. Boise and Grants Pass had similar ordinances, they were challenged. That worked its way through the system in June, the Supreme Court ruled that cities could put limitations on camping in public. This ordinance will both address camping in public and, oh, excuse me, on public property and fires as well. To the extent that basically overnight camping will be unlawful within the city between certain hours of nighttime.
Alright, thank you. Do we have any public comment? No? Any discussion from council?
I have one question if I would. So we're saying no to camping, I get that part, but we're not saying no to approve, to camp and approve parking areas, right? I mean camping areas.
No, the only camping areas are RV parks within the city.
And that's okay?
That is still allowed, yes, that's the only place you can camp in our municipal code. That code dates back to around nineteen seventy and it actually predates recreational vehicle, the term, it says camp cars, but by modern definitions, a recreational vehicle, those have to be in an RV park.
I just want to make a point of clarity for the public.
Yes, yeah. And it does, this will follow, we have, we're working on policy for enforcement of this as far as abatement. There are certain standards you have to have, you have to hold, it's under the governor's executive order of sixty days and forty-eight hours notice. But we're trying to avoid those situations where it gets so bad that you're having to bring in a large truck to remove items, so... And this only affects public property, not private property. Private property owners still have, you know, authority over their property and we can handle it through trespassing laws.
Thanks for that.
Alright, any other questions or discussion from council?
Do we have any timeline on when the procedures are going to be defined for abatement?
I believe the plan was to work on a policy by January for that. But again, that's... The executive order policy was designed after the Caltrans, but that was pretty standard across law enforcement. You typically would give somebody a notice without the executive order, you'd give them notice, you're doing this illegally, you need to get your stuff. And the sixty days has been... And the 60 days has been standard for some time. That's the same that we use for all found property, basically. It's a standard that we've used. In my tenure here, I've had to remove one camp. The person actually came back and claimed it. It was on the on-ramp. I don't know where he went, but I did hold that per, you know, the requirement, and he did come back and claim that. That was the only one that ever did, but...
Do we currently have facilities to be able to hold this?
Depending on the needs. Small encampments, yes. Large encampments, no. But there will be certain guidelines within that policy as to what... There is a, an allowance for exigent circumstances. Those would be the typical things that you would not want to hold. Those are going to be hazardous materials, anything posing a threat that you wouldn't hold within a building. So those can be removed immediately without the requirements under the executive order. If we reached the point where we had a large encampment with a lot of property that needed to be held, we may have to seek some sort of alternative storage facility. But we have, we've never run into one of those yet on public property. We've had some larger ones on private property. One in particular required two dump trucks to clean it. California Conservation Corps came in and cleaned that one up. But they did not find a lot of items that they were supposed to hold. Those actually were disposed of because it wasn't items within their policy.
At one point, we do have the Roundhouse, right?
We do, and that would be an option. You know, but you still have to maintain some security of it as well, so, I mean, it does have a value to somebody.
I mean, there's a lot of stuff in the Roundhouse.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, just in terms of timing, because this is an ordinance, it requires two readings, so it has to be approved twice by the council, and then it only takes effect 30 days after the adoption, which happens on the second reading. So a January, you know, timeline for the policies is still before this is going to go into effect if it is approved.
All right, thank you both for the clarifications. Any other questions or comments from council?
I'll make a motion to consider the introduction and first reading by title only of ordinance number 482-2024, adding chapter 12.22 and amending sections 9.10 and 020, and 9.10.050, and 9.10.150 of chapter 9.10 of the Weed Municipal Code.
I second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's a long title.
It is. All right, our next item, item C, Public Works by Motion. Council will consider adoption of Resolution Number 52-2024, authorizing the city manager to enter into Task Order Number 2024-08, authorizing Pace Engineering to proceed with the Shastina WWTP Improvement Planning Phase.
Yes, council, I'm asking for 110,000. It's not budgeted. To start the environmental process to upgrade our sewer plant, that does take on the whole entire South End. Right now, we are over design capacity when it comes to treatment, and in order for us to grow, we got to continue, we got to get this done. This will open up more funding opportunities to upgrade the sewer plant eventually.
All right, and just for clarification for the public, when we reference here Shastina WWTP, we are referring to Shastina Drive in South Weed. Lake Shastina Services are not part of the Weed Municipal Services District. With that, are there any questions or comments from council?
I think what Chris failed to mention, I don't know if he failed, it's actually to make us design... It's structured to make us get shovel-ready for changes. Is that correct?
Yes, this will open up a lot more funding opportunities because there are opportunities out there that are interested, but the environmental part is, unless we get the environmental part done, we are not qualified for those opportunities.
How long has that been like this?
For quite some time. I know that the plan was for, for when Loves came in and when the college was originally getting built, what they had originally designed.
Right.
Those fees were going to us, putting in more aeration,
which helps with the treatment.
But because Loves did not come in and then COS downsized the original scope of work, that has created a big issue when it comes to that we would, we cannot afford just the aeration. New aeration, just off of the dorms, just off of COS buying.
And so, let me ask you, COS, can they contribute at all, or is that something that...
They, with, with the, I have not been able to look at the numbers yet because I still have not got an official design from COS, but those numbers will come in and help with this.
Okay. It should, it should play their part.
Any other questions or comments from council?
And Chris, I understood that part of getting this environmental impact study done now is to expedite being able to retain grant money so that this can be abated and fixed.
That's correct, because right now, we're looking at, if we're lucky, 10 years down the road right now. If we do do this environmental, we got a report from Pace Engineering that it could possibly cut it in half.
And so instead of stagnation for 10 years in South Weed, we could expedite it?
Yes, and 10 years would be bare, I mean, if everything went smooth, which we all know it doesn't, yes, 10, 10 years is bare minimum.
All right. Good information. Questions, comments?
Don't be looking like you're happy, you know?
Any public comments? We have a public tonight and not much comment.
That's okay, somebody gets to listen. Make a motion here? Oh, I'll make a motion to introduce Resolution Number 52-2024. No, no. Okay, authorizing the city manager to enter into Task Order Number 2024-08, authorizing Pace Engineering to proceed with the Shastina WWTP Improvement Planning Phase.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We will now move on to item D. Finance by Motion. Council will consider adoption of Resolution Number 53-2024, approving the mid-year budget adjustments for fiscal year 2024 and '25.
These are just mid-year adjustments to the budget for various items. Obviously, we've had a shortfall in our budget line item for attorney services. We need increased budget there. And the other items that I've itemized on the agenda item. I can answer any questions about those if you want, or I can go into more detail. Would you like me to talk about each one of them, or do you want to just ask me questions, or...
Jill, just for, for my understanding, why is there so much in unemployment in the fire department?
Because they have seasonal employees that file for unemployment.
Okay, and is it usual to be this far off in the budget at this time of year? In other words, is it something that happens more during the winter and it'll lighten up as we go further towards July?
Well, I mean, they're, they're going to probably collect unemployment till they get hired again, but what I will say is the budget's kind of, we may have under-budgeted that line item because it would be typical to have unemployment in the fire department. We've been doing a lot of work on refining the budget and bringing it more into line to our actual expenses. It was, it was not very accurate in the last few years, so we're trying to, trying to make that a little more accurate, and I will say that, that probably we should have budgeted more in that line item.
One other thing for council clarification, particularly the new members, is that the city did have a two-year budget, so when you're out this far from that, it's almost two years since those estimates were made.
Okay.
And as far as the rate going down, that only, usually that rate is established once per year. Is that correct?
We pay actual on unemployment.
Okay.
How many do we have unemployed that are getting unemployment benefits?
I think currently, there's two that have filed.
That's max, probably, or could there be more?
There could be more.
And how often have they been doing this? Every year?
Um, yeah.
That's the first I've heard of it.
I don't think it was being expensed properly.
I've never heard anything about getting unemployment.
I don't think it was being expensed properly in prior years to the appropriate line item.
So it's, it's just another one of those adjustments that we're making, right?
Yes.
And then Jill, could you speak to the health benefits from the library and how that...
Yeah, yeah, I can. So, um, we discovered partway through the last fiscal year that we had some library employees that had gone over the thousand hours for PERS, so they were now eligible for PERS. We, there was one employee that had been eligible for about a year and that didn't get caught. So we had to, we've had some penalties, and we've had to pay back health insurance payments on her. So it was not expenses we had anticipated, but I, I believe we've got a handle on the health insurance item at this point. They will be CalPERS, they will be eligible for CalPERS retirement going forward because they are CalPERS members now. But we had to keep their hours in line because that was not something that was in the library budget to pay health insurance for the library employees.
And those compensation rates have been changed and modified. Am I correct on that? Or still kind of off base on...
So essentially, if they're working more than 20 hours a week, they're eligible for healthcare benefits. And so they had, they had received approval to work additional hours in prior fiscal years. And I, apparently, that was not something that the administration was aware of that that would cause them to fall into being eligible for healthcare. So the city manager has cut their hours back to 20 hours a week so that, to keep them not eligible for healthcare.
So now they're at about 20 hours a week?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
And may I ask where it fell through the cracks, how that happened?
The approval to work more than 20 hours a week was given by the prior city manager.
And I'm not sure all the considerations at that time were taken into, into consideration. That's the best I could come up with it. I, I don't know. It was kind of a surprise for a couple of us that have been involved with, was Proposition O, because that was never officially the intent of Proposition O. Proposition O was, the intent originally, as I recall, was to keep a backbone into the library so that we could keep our library services there. The Friends of the Library used to also kick in X amount of dollars to help with that budget. The Friends of the Library became no more. And now, so the extra hours came out of the Measure O money. And I don't think we looked at all the ramifications of that. That would be my best shot at it. Steve might have a better shot at it, but...
Well, I wasn't here on the front end, but I know on the back end what we're trying to do moving forward.
He's correct.
We do have two employees who are limited to 20 hours a week. We're making sure that that works with the library, and so far, it seems to be working pretty well. We're hoping to continue that moving forward. They are eligible for CalPERS because, once you become eligible, you're eligible moving forward, but we are keeping the hours down so that it won't trigger the other costs.
How many days a week are they open now?
They're open four days a week. It's Tuesday through Friday, 12 to 5. One of the things that we were looking at was to see whether or not, because that's, that's 20 hours, and so we wanted to see whether they need a little bit of prep time where it was closed. And so far, they're doing fine with it being open, but I think that's because they're working at it to make that happen.
And there's just two employees right now?
There's, there are two employees. They have some assistance from some volunteers. There may be a need in the future to look at another part-time employee for fill-ins, but so far, they, they've been working pretty well on that. There are some days where the library ends up closing if there's illness or, well, and things like the internet and the power going down, it was also closed during that time. But it seems to be working pretty well right now, but there are some things we may need to adjust moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
And so this is another opportunity for the public to understand in the community here how critical volunteers are to many of our services, not just for the fire department and for public improvement projects, but also for the library to continue to support having expanded hours and services. I think that's a, that's a horse I'm going to beat every chance I get. All right, does the council have any other questions on the budget adjustments as presented? I think they're very good questions and very good for the public to hear the answers to those questions.
No more?
Okay, do we have any public comment?
Can we go back to the sedation?
That's at your discretion.
Uh, yeah, go ahead. We've already taken action, so we can't reverse that, but would definitely like to hear your questions.
Come to the podium.
You need to come up to the front.
Yeah.
Of course, thank you.
So does our city have the capacity now or will have the capacity to, for these laundromat business here in town?
That's all, that's kind of a hard question. Where's this laundromat at?
It would be somewhere here in maybe Main Street or Weed Boulevard?
Yes, yes, we will.
Are we, do we have, are we, do we have the capacity now, or is it going to be in the future?
It will definitely be in the future. I would independently take a look at the plans to make a judgment call on that one.
And just for clarification, the Shastina line that was approved to move forward with the environmental review, that's for South Weed.
That's correct.
That has no effect on Main Street or Weed Boulevard north of the college, correct?
It does have effect on the Boulevard because the businesses on the Boulevard do feed into that line. It's really from, the cutoff is Division Street, really. From Division Street, that's the most easiest way of explaining it without actually showing you guys a map.
Perfect.
So South Weed is...
South Weed starts at Division Street regarding what we're talking about, which is Tri-County's Bank, that direction, okay?
Gotcha.
Yes.
Okay. Great, thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. To the topic at hand on the finance, do we have any public comment or further questions in that item?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 53-2024, approving the mid-year budget adjustments for fiscal year 2425.
Motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Item E, financed by motion, council considered adoption of Resolution Number 54-2024, approving fiscal year 2324 financed, final budget adjustments.
This is just to close out 2324. I would have liked to bring this, have brought this a couple of months sooner, but I, I've been pretty, pretty busy in the finance department because we are doing the software conversion. But essentially, we made projections, I believe in April, to project out in our budget through the end of the year. These are just to true up where we landed as of the end of the accrual period for 2324. And the differences would be just differences from what I projected with the help of department heads and what was actually incurred. And then you'll notice I do have one revision and that's in regards to the fire department. There was a fire at the end of June, the sites fire, which there was strike team wages that were incurred for that fire. So, there was, we received about $45,000 in revenue from the sites fire, which I accrued back, which is what, what the amendment, the revision is for, to accrue that 45,000 back into 2324 to match those expenses.
Okay. I got that. I don't know about everybody else, but that's, everybody...
I'm, if you, yeah, ask me questions if you need me to explain that any further. I'm happy to explain.
Well, I understand that, but I, I keep looking back at this Fund 37 and we just keep, keep seeming, we keep using this Fund 37. And so, how, how much longer are we going to have to use this?
So... The reality is we, we probably need to, that's probably going to need to be a planning type thing that, that we're going to need to look at is, you know, we, we do seem to have a shortfall in our general fund and, and how in going forward, we're going to cover that shortfall.
And, so are we going to look at all ways to, to try to cover that shortfall at some point? Like, I hate to say it, but drastic measures to...
There's two ways to cover a shortfall.
Yeah, I understand.
Cut expenses or increase income.
I understand that. But I know, but I'm saying this, this fund was not set up for this.
No, I, I know. I would, I would tell you, I would tell you that too.
And it's been a concern for me since one night ago and, and I don't see issues being resolved. I see more money coming out. And it's not anyone's particular fault in this room, but I'm just saying though, this is, this is not a good thing. This is not a good sign for the public or for us, I think. That's just my thing.
So, 37 is, for clarity, 37 is the mill fire?
That is the Roseburg settlement. So, we've actually put, I, I believe it's about four and a half million into deferred revenue, which is the portion that's set aside for repairs, projects that need to be done that were caused by the mill fire.
Right.
The other portion of that settlement was for lost revenue. So, it is, truly is general fund money, but Mark is right. It's not sustainable to keep running a deficit.
That we're going to run out.
Also, the fact that that money is designed, particularly Chris is probably going to have to, to get into that fund for the, for the streets, some of the infrastructure that still needs to be finalized.
Right. And that's for the infrastructure.
I mean, if we get lucky, then we get funds for the street or some part of it. But if we're not, that money will be gone. And I think part of the relationship that we've inferred here is that we, our general budget is, is going in the hole on a continuum. Did I get that? Part of that?
You got that right, yes.
So, I just want to comment, Mayor, members of the council, I think that it's very clear that there needs to be some long-term strategic planning on, on the finances, both looking long-term as well as getting ready for the budget for fiscal year 2526. So, that is something that should be on your agenda moving forward, both to figure out what you're doing for the next budget year, but also looking longer term to try to make sure that your reserves continue to be there and that you have funding to do the critical services that the city needs to do.
That's the most important.
So, you'll probably be looking at some sort of workshop at some point in the future to take a look at that and we can talk with you about that.
Good point.
Yeah. No, this is definitely something in the previous month's meetings, we've discovered the shortfalls from the, the past and very thankful to Director Porterfield for being here to, one, identify that those shortfalls have been happening and to get them corrected so that we're aware.
That wasn't a shot at you, Jill, at all.
No, I, I didn't think of that. I'm good.
You know, I'm concerned about it and, you know, it's not something every, it's getting bigger.
It's a, it's a good point, Mark.
I'm just saying, it is, you know, there's ways we have to try to fix this or resolve it or have a plan with it and I'm not hearing like at this particular point. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah. And that's going to be the purpose of the workshop. The intent is to bring in our new city manager to lead through that because that's going to be a long-term changes in planning going forward.
I have a good body to set here now since to me, you know, I'm not going anywhere to make this happen for all of us.
Jill is the number person. Jill is the number person. Do you see a particular department that is repeatedly falling out of budget?
I would say, I would say there is not a lot of wiggle room in our budget. I mean, you may be able to cut a little here, cut a little there. I don't think it's going to make up for our shortfall by anything, anything we have now. I don't think we're going to be able to make that up from what I've seen.
Well, let me ask it another way. Are you seeing any particular department falling over expenditure routinely that we would need to take a closer look at?
Um, that's really hard for me to answer because I was talking to Mr. Baker about this earlier today. When I came in here last year, we had a budget that had excess revenues over expenditures of about three and a half million, which we know is entirely not accurate. So, I've been saying since I've been here that we, we can't really rely on the previous budget. So, I don't, I don't know that I've actually been here long enough to really establish a really, I think we've got a good budget for 2425 now, but, but we're only, not even halfway through this year yet. So, I don't think I can speak on that at this point.
It seems to me that the numbers from previous budgets were not realistic and aligned with revenues and expenses. And so, that's something that, you know, Jill's worked on this last budget year and that we as a council need to make sure, as Mr. Baker said, we conduct a workshop and we really put the effort in as a council to get involved in those numbers and make sure that the budgets are correct going forward.
I agree, Mr. Mayor.
And if you could speak to, one more thing is, so that the citizens of Weed know, what is the strike team of the fire department that ran over budget?
So, the strike team, those are the, the fire assignments that are out of our jurisdiction that they do in conjunction with Cal Fire and Cal OES.
So, the, if I read it correctly on this budget line, it says that it was 47,676 higher than we anticipated?
Right. And that's before, if you remember, I had another $45,000 that I needed to accrue that I realized after I had done my original. So, when I looked back and accrued that, that brings that, and this is combined with strike team and fire department personnel, after accruing back that revenue, the actual amount's 24,087 dollars.
24,000 or? 24,000. 24,000?
24,000.
And so, those who have followed along will remember that in previous council meetings, we had discussed moving the strike teams to a separate line item in the budget so that we can track those independently of our local services for fire protection. And the purpose there is that we want to make sure we truly understand what those numbers are going forward for our income and expenses, both locally and for strike teams.
Do we have any idea when that's going to be put forward so that we do have that? Jill?
It, it is currently. So, Department 429 is strike team. So, if you, you look on your financial packet, 10429 is going to be your strike team.
429, huh?
Yeah. So, that's something that will be reported out to the council members and has been for the last couple of months previous. So, we'll be able to look at that as well as all the other budget line items very directly.
And so, that I understand on the police forfeiture fund, it's because the Weed Police Department already, only receives a percentage of...
Yeah. And that was really, that was me not fully understanding the forfeiture funds, not really realizing that a portion of that was going to have to be distributed out to other entities.
Okay. And so, we wouldn't be seeing a number like that in the future?
No. And, and really the way, we're actually accounting for that a little bit differently after talking with our outside auditor. So, we, I believe it was last council meeting or two council meetings ago, council approved the formation of a new fund, Fund 25, I believe, which is essentially a fiduciary fund to hold those forfeiture funds until they're adjudicated, at which time we can transfer them into the general fund. So, we will be handling that a bit differently going forward.
And just for the public's knowledge, approximately what is the percentage that we keep as a city of Weed for forfeiture funds?
Oh, we receive roughly 60%, but then we have to pay a little bit out of that, out of our 60%. So, I, I would say when it's all said and done, 57% of an asset forfeiture.
That's an exact number. Just kidding.
And I, just to clarify, that Jill has done a tremendous amount of work on getting this to where it's actually accountable and I appreciate that. So, the, everything she's done there with the Fund 25 has, has been tremendous and I appreciate the work.
And so, when you have a forfeiture like that and say CHP gets what, or the Sheriff's Department, there's a portion of their confiscation coming to this department also?
No, no. What, what you're thinking of is back in the day, there was kind of an agreement with, when the task force was running.
Right, okay.
Task force actually, there's the actual true task force that everybody remembers back in the day, that was actually put on hiatus and there was actually a vote to disband it, that was never actually finally signed. That's something that we'll be addressing in the future. But this is separate. This is, this is forfeitures by our department that are placing this until they're adjudicated.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
And just for my own edification, if hypothetically, another agency such as CHP or Sheriff's Department makes a stop in the city of Weed and we assist, as in our officers, our drug dog, they go in there and they find that and there's a seizure, is there a split between agencies or is it the arresting agency that takes the forfeiture?
It's typically the arresting agency. I, I see where you're going with that. That, that was more of how the former task force worked and that's not how it's currently working because, again, task force became Summit, which was basically a major crimes investigation team, not just a task force. And then around 2000, I believe it was February of 2020, there was discussion in a meeting and that task force, Summit, as it was known, was, actually there was a vote to disband that.
And just for the public, I mean, it's, the, the criticality here is that our police department is taking fentanyl, methamphetamine, and other harmful substances off of the streets from people trafficking through the area. But it's good to understand the financial ramifications behind that as well, so...
And Chief, could you, do you know what percentage of unadjudica, unadjudicated cases there are? Who does the reconciliation to determine that the money has already been divided out?
That's what we're working on with the Fund 25. There, there was really no way of tracking that in previous years. We've worked, it was, it was brought up, but with the change of finance directors over several years, Jill came in and she quickly jumped on that and got it to the point where we can actually track it much better.
Okay. So, there may be funds that are due, that cases are adjudicated, it's just they haven't caught up in the system yet?
Um, there may be funds that need to be applied to the general fund from that. That's what we need to determine.
Okay.
That's Fund 25?
Yeah. So, it's, it's similar to the strike team fund, but this is just for us, for the police department, I say us, police department.
Just so I make sure my understanding is correct, if you take anything worth of value and forfeit it, for instance, money that a drug dealer may have crossing through the city, you guys make the arrest, you take the money, you put it into an account, if that person's found guilty and the case comes back and the city's notified that case is finished, that's the only time you could take money from that forfeiture account?
Yes.
So, there's kind of multiple steps that have to happen before the city can access that fund?
Yeah.
Right. Good discussion. Any other questions?
No, I'm good. I, I would personally just like to, Jill has done a spectacular job on getting our books done. But with, with that said, I would like to move with the adoption of Resolution Number 54-2024. Did we do a public comment?
Uh, no, we now will go for public comments since there's no other questions from council.
I wanted to get, get that before David caught me. I want to make a move for the adoption of Resolution Number 54-2024, approving the fiscal year 2324 final budget adjustments.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And now, move on to Item F, Fire Department by motion, council will consider authorizing the Weed Volunteer Fire Department to apply for a FEMA micro grant for equipment, seeing as our fire chief has had to leave for a call. We'll ask the city manager to fill in his shoes.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. What you have in front of you is a request to make a grant application to what's called the FEMA micro grant. This is designed to buy equipment to put on the new engine, which I don't remember the number. I refer to it as 007 because that one I can remember. But that new engine is supposed to arrive, I believe, in July. This grant application is due later this month, I think maybe even next week. The way that it works is that we can get $75,000 worth of equipment, but there is a local match of 25%, which means that the city share would be 18,750. One of the things that we're looking at is the term of when this grant might be awarded. The hope was that this would be awarded to us so that we could buy the equipment prior to the engine being ready. That would be ideal. That may not actually happen. In that event, what would happen is that we would move equipment from either supplies in the, in the firehouse or from engine 1214, might be the wrong number, it might be, I think it's 1214, over to the, the new engine when it arrives. So, that will be something that we'll be to take a look at as we get closer to the date of needing to equip that engine, is whether or not, what the timeline is for the approval. Because at one point, we understood that possibly it could take as long as a year or 10 months, I think, to get the, the money. But different FEMA grants take different amount of time. So, with that, we would recommend approval. It's better to get 75% of the money paid by somebody else than 100%. There is a timing issue.
Well, definitely, I think, makes sense to spend 18... Well, definitely, I think, uh, makes sense to spend eighteen thousand to get seventy-five thousand dollars of equipment for our new engine if we get the grant.
If you don't get the grant.
If we don't get the grant, then we're gonna have to look at funding for that elsewhere, other grants or?
Uh, we had a couple of plans in place besides equipping the third engine. We, one was to equip one of the pickup trucks with the equipment?
No, I, I think that, um, one of the things that was approved previously, and again, I may have the terms wrong, but a slip-in pumper was being placed in, on one of the, uh, fire department pickup, uh, trucks.
Right.
As I under, recall, that's scheduled for May. Now, what that really does is provide another vehicle that can be driven, um, to a fire that actually has, you know, the right equipment on it, but that's a very small, uh, unit.
Yeah.
So really, there's the, um, there was an engine that was taken out of service between one and two years ago, I think it was closer to two years ago, so there is equipment from that. But typically what you do when you buy a new fire engine is that you end up buying new equipment for that engine. You, you try to move stuff from the old engines, but the, you know, equipment has, things like hoses and things have a life. There's some other things that last a lot longer, so, but, but you typically have that cost as well. And it, my experience is that typically the, um, fire departments focus on getting the engine and not the equipment for an engine, meaning not this fire department, but fire departments I've worked with over my career. And so one of the things we were trying to do is to make sure that we were also getting ready to make sure the equipment was going to be ready as well. This is a grant application where the timing might be slightly off for that, but it's still something that's, that's worth doing. Uh, I'm not as familiar with the equipment to know where the deficiencies would be on, if the engine arrives July first and this grant is not there. But, um, you know, we'll, we'll figure out a way to have engines, uh,
Okay.
have equipment, so.
Uh, generally the fire protection equipment, things like turnouts, hoses, anything that's PPE related, uh, for medical devices, those are all gonna have shelf life, so those are things that we can't just take off the shelf after years and reuse. Um, nor would you want to be reused if you had a medical emergency.
Do we request from any departments an inventory list of things that are owned by the city in their department?
I'm not familiar with that, um, typically, well, I, I'm gonna probably defer to Jill, but I will tell you what typically, um, happens is that there are certain items that are put on the capital, um, list, but most things, like, we would not necessarily have, for example, hose, which is a, something that you use up. We would not capitalize that, but engines and, and very expensive equipment, we might have on a list. Having been here only a short time, I can't tell you that that's been done in the past and having also been here long enough to know that there are some of those things that probably aren't up to date. I would say that there probably is not a, a full list of, of equipment in any department, but I could be wrong.
So there, there is CapEx lists, um, for several departments. I know for the police department, we have to annually review specific items, um, due to the nature for the state. Um, I believe the federal reporting requirements as well. Um, but it is something that has been discussed, the staff level in requesting that we maintain, uh, lists for capital equipment so we can review those yearly. Um, and I just don't know that staff has got that completed at this point, I think this is a very recent request.
Yeah, no, we, we have not done an inventory, um, since I've been here, but we can, that can definitely be something that we implement. And I, I definitely understand, you know, PPE, I know officer vests, there's, there's a time limit, um, to those kind of things. I'm less concerned about that. Um, but of course, equipping a patrol vehicle and having lights that can transition from one vehicle to another is an expense. Radios are quite a heavy expense. So I'd be more questionable about if we could have some kind of list for that. Those things that could transfer, so for instance, if we're applying for this grant, um, we can get some sense of the total amount of value of assets we need to be able to equip another engine or another police car.
Right.
As opposed to having it reserved, and I get it, that we have a bright new shiny car or engine and we want brand-new things. Um, and maybe if we start cutting some of those quarters, I don't anticipate it to be a large chunk, but it, it could be something that we could say, okay, for this year, we're gonna use the old equipment and then we'll budget it for the next year, but without having any idea what those are, um, and just deferring to reports from department heads, I think it would be very difficult as a council member to figure out what's actually necessary right now versus something we could put off.
Yeah, I agree.
I think that's a very good thought, I, I know Justin Perfect keeps a pretty good track on equipment, even if he doesn't buy something, he knows he needs it still. But I, I know, we used to do a regular, on a regular basis, kind of a, a continuum of patrol cars or a continuum of, uh, fire vehicles. Probably the same is true on public works, I'm thinking, but, uh, some of that's kind of just fallen by the wayside and we just need to get back into doing that.
Well, I would also like to know from the departments, as far as computer equipment, where we're at.
So we, we do have lists of all our vehicles, computer equipment and specialty weapons, because I see the one for the riot, uh, tear gas gun every year. Um, but I have seen those in the past two years since I've been on the council. So I know that those large capital expense items are being tracked.
And just, just to remind council and advise the new council members, uh, several months ago, we approved a four-year plan through our IT company to upgrade, uh, workstations. It was front, front-loaded, uh, we're currently still working on that, it included servers, workstations. So we are in that process as well.
Then theoretically, they should be working behind us right now on part of that, so, we'll see.
Theoretically.
Well, meaning that I haven't, I haven't checked, they were going to start either during the council meeting or right after the council meeting, so, uh, we'll see. Um, sometimes computer stuff and technology in general takes a little bit longer to actually implement than it seems like that it should. But we did, uh, the council did approve buying some switches and workstations and, and other items, and some of those are being installed.
I think we approved some infrastructure up in this, our wiring system.
Those are the switches for the network, um, so that was something, um, three or four months ago, we approved as a council when we brought in, um, the consulting service to, to look at our situation. We were, it was brought to our attention that we were severely lacking, um, in up-to-date and operable systems, not just for user workstations, but for network switches, cabling. Um, so, um, as was already mentioned, we did front-load and approved that as a council. Um, but now we have that established list of IT assets and we know the lifespan on those. But I do think it would be something good, and this was something that I had requested in a staff meeting only a week ago, uh, so I, I don't expect everyone has it done yet, um, that we do get a better inventory, um, in regards to, you know, the items you mentioned, such as, uh, you know, non, non, I could, I would say perishable or non, uh, you know, PPE, you know, items at a little more granular scale than just vehicles and, um, you know, large equipment, so. That way we can, uh, properly budget for what we need in the future, because we have a lot of needs across a lot of departments. All right, any other questions or comments on this item for the FEMA micro grant? We have any public comments? I'm happy that half of our public has stayed for the remainder of the meeting, appreciate that.
I'll make a motion authorizing the Weed Volunteer Fire Department apply for a FEMA micro grant for equipment.
I second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. And I think as a follow-up for that, um, for our city manager, if you can request our fire chief to inform us, uh, if the grant is approved, what that equipment expense was for that seventy-five thousand dollars, um, just so that the council, the current council can see exactly where that money went for which equipment.
Are you talking about in the, in, if, if we're approved in the future?
If we're approved for this micro grant from FEMA, uh, just would like the fire chief to, or, or his assistant chief to give us a list so that everyone in the council can see how that money was applied, um, and become familiar with the equipment and, and the needs.
Okay, so when it, when it, when, when it, uh, is funded and it arrives?
Yes.
Okay, great, we can do that.
Excellent. All right, moving on to item eleven, staff reports, um, seeing as our fire chief is out on a call. Uh, Mr. Baker, do you have anything you'd like to report on, on the fire department's behalf?
Not that I know of.
All right, well, we'll move on to Director Porterfield.
Uh, we're just really busy, we started our implementation, um, uploading historical data, getting our payroll converted over to our new software system, so, um, as Mr. Baker likes to put, it's eating my life right now. So, um, that's, that's really all that's going on in finance besides status quo, so.
All right, Director Davis.
So the water bypass project's moving actually pretty smoothly right now, um, they will start working up in the college area. There will be some nighttime work with some major water shutdowns, so just everyone that, up in that area, just be prepared for that, we will hand out notices like always, though.
Excellent, Chief Mayberry.
Uh, just a couple of things, um, Christmas baskets, two former employees, I won't mention their names, I don't do it for recognition, and current employee Roxanne Anzo, busy working on this season's Christmas basket, baskets, first time ever. We had sign-ups in this room, uh, we filled the list the first day, so kind of a sign of the times. Um, that being said, pickup will be December twentieth at the Presbyterian Church to anybody that was able to get on the list. As far as Roxanne Anzo goes, I was gonna say something last month, but I waited because city hall staff was doing something for her, but I just wanna recognize her for her thirty years as a full-time employee for the Weed Police Department. She actually has more than thirty years, she started in high school. But as, as a full-time employee for the city of Weed, she's been here for thirty years, and I just wanna thank her for her service and hope that she sticks around, uh, for a few more.
All right, thank you. And our city clerk?
Uh, we have a, uh, Planning Commission meeting next Wednesday with some development in South Weed, so that's exciting. Um, I'd like to welcome our two new council members, thank you both for, for, um, putting in your paperwork and, and being appointed to the council, and if I don't see everyone, just wishing everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, and our city manager?
I liked what she said. I just wanna remind the council that the city will be, um, closed, uh, between, uh, Christmas Eve and, um, July, or not July, January second, wishful thinking. So, uh, there will be, uh, there will be, uh, some employees, uh, who will be, uh, working during that time, but the office will not be open.
Christmas party? We invite everybody to, to the Christmas party?
Uh, yes, December nineteenth, correct? At the bowling alley is, is the city Christmas party, I believe everyone's received, I've emailed out the flyer to everyone, so, except for David. That's my fault, that's my bad, David's, David, you're invited.
I heard you were one hell of a bowler, so I just.
All right, and our city attorney?
I, uh, have no report, just, uh, happy holidays to everyone.
All right. Well, that rounds out all of our staff reports, uh, at this point, I will accept the motion to adjourn to closed session.
I so, motion?
We do need to take public comment on the closed session items.
Ah, yes, um, do we have any public comments on our closed session items?
Yeah. Is it proper to ask some questions about the, uh, the project of South Weed?
This is a opportunity for comments on the closed session items. Which is not, that's not on closed session.
We'll, we'll, we'll get to use to this, yeah.
So, um, with that said, I, I would like to inform both our, our public audience tonight, our six or seven viewers on YouTube and anyone who watches this in the future, um, I think it would be really good for all of you to come to the Planning Commission meeting next Wednesday, uh, here, um, in this chamber at five-thirty, because the Planning Commission will be hearing from those project proponents and potential opponents, uh, on those plans. So that would give you a chance to not only hear directly, uh, what those projects are, uh, but also the Planning Commission's questions and direction. Um, I think it'd be really good for people in the community to become more engaged, not just with the council, um, but with the Planning Commission as well, because one thing that we're, everyone on this DS and on the staff is really strong about is, you know, continuous improvement and development of not just our main street, but South Weed and all of our housing, and that starts at the Planning Commission level for many of these projects. Um, so please get engaged, um, and certainly come and ask those questions at council. Um, but, you know, you may find that there's something of interest or that, you know, you may have an idea that comes from it and have your own developments in the future. And so we need a lot more entrepreneurship and development, uh, within the community, so.
I have one comment, that the motel up on the south side that was being all repaired is looking pretty spiffy, so it's kinda nice to know that when John left, things were, were going, and hopefully we can get some finish up on that motel. It brings us some more TOT tax. Thanks.
All right, uh, any other public comments in regards to closed session?
Mayor Members of the council, I just wanna note for the record, there will be no reports out of closed session tonight.
All right.
So I'll make a move to go to closed session?
Side it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are now moving to closed session.
That means we're gonna go to another room, walk. I hate walking.